All right, we have a red light. So that means we can move forward. Please stand Pastor Marty Hamilton of the First United Methodist Church of Baymanet will lead our invocation and Commissioner Gruber will lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We have so much to be thankful for. Father, you have allowed us to be blessed, to be a part of your family, a part of this great community, this great county. Father, we pray that you continue to pour out your blessings upon us from the northern part of our county with the fields and the forests to the eastern shore, to the Gulf of Mexico. God, you have poured out your blessings on us in innumerable ways. And Father, we come before you today to thank you and to bless you and to praise you for all the good things that you give us. Lord, we continue to thank you for the healing that you bring to our people. Even this morning, Father, so many are getting the vaccine. God, we just thank you for this. We thank you for the implementation of this program that will help save lives. And so, Father, we just pray that it will continue to run smoothly and that more and more people will continue to find hope as the coronavirus is hopefully coming to an end sooner than later. Lord, we lift up those who serve us as your family, God. We lift up our first responders, the men and women who serve us through the police departments and the fire departments and the sheriff's department, God, who put their lives on the line for us each day. God, we pray your blessings upon them in their homes and their families and God just bless every interaction they have with the citizens of this county. Lord, we lift up the various communities from Baymanet to Fairhope to Spanish Fort to Gulf Shores and all in between, God, that you will continue to pour out your blessings upon each community. And God, that we will continue to honor you in all that we do. Father, we know that we have, we've come a long way as a nation, but we still have a long way to go. And Father, we pray that you will continue to pour out your blessings upon us and that we will truly be one nation under God. Lord, we love you and we thank you for loving us in the precious name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I think I was supposed to hit the gap, so I'm a little behind, but we're going to move right along here. Wayne, if you would, lead us into our agenda, please.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the regular meeting minutes from the January 5th, 2021 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the minutes of January the 5th, 2021 of a regular meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Everybody signify by saying aye to approve.
Aye.
Unanimous. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, next we have administration items. We have two items that were pulled off the consent for these. The first item to be voted on separately is BA1. This is the Third Annual Fort Morgan Mardi Gras Parade 2021. The request is to approve the closing of streets in the Fort Morgan area for this event. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I make a motion that we deny this request based on the situation at hand with the COVID-19 virus and I just make a request that we deny it.
Mr. Chairman, also look at that motion.
All right, we got a motion and a second to deny this request relative to a Mardi Gras parade in the Fort Morgan area. Any further discussion? All in favor and agree with denying this request signify by saying aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Wayne?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item that was removed from the consent for administration items is BA10. This is a, it is removing the monetary limitation on compensation under Alabama Code, Section 40-6-3 for supernumerary tax collectors, tax assessors, and license commissioners. Mr. Chairman, this is an item that was pulled off during the work session to be discussed. The staff recommendation was to authorize the resolution to remove the cap limitation related to supernumerary tax collectors. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We deny the request.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on BA10. Any further discussion or comment? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Pose like sign. So it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, with those two items disposed of, we have the balance of the administration items BA2 through BA9. Staff recommends approval of those items.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve items BA2 to BA9.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. These will go, this is in effect the consent agenda. Is that correct?
That's right. Yes, sir, for administration items.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next we have budget and purchasing. Again, we have items BE1 through BE8. Staff recommends approval of those items.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve items number BE1 through BE8.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got BE1 through BE8. To approve those as presented, all in favor of that signify by saying aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, sir. What's next?
Mr. Chairman, we have one item under building inspection, BF1. Staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve item BF1 under building inspection.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Unanimous. Next topic.
Mr. Chairman, next is BH1 under communications information systems and staff does recommend approval of BH1.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve item BH1 under CIS.
I'll second that motion.
All right, got a motion and a second on BH1 under the communications CIS system. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Unanimous. Yes, sir. Next topic.
Mr. Chairman, under elected officials, we have BJ1 and BJ2. Staff recommends approval of those two items.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve items number BJ1 and BJ2.
I second that.
Got a motion and a second for BJ1 and BJ2. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Unanimous. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are three items under emergency management. Prior discussion and commission requests this morning, we're going to take these individually. They are grants. Mr. Chairman, the first item is BK1, which is a fiscal year 2020 Homeland Security Grant Agreement with the Fairhope Police Department for $50,000 for crowd place protection and equipment. Ms. Danan Smith is here from EMA and also want to mention, Mr. Chairman, we have Mayor Sherri Sullivan in the audience this morning from Fairhope, Chief Stephanie Hollinghead and Mrs. Sherri Schwartz of the Fairhope Police Department.
Very good. If y'all would come forward, please.
And the grant for, that's been approved for the Fairhope Police Department is $50,000 for the crowded place protection equipment. And I'm going to go ahead and say her words.
Thank you so much. I'm Sherri Sullivan with the City of Fairhope and just want to thank the Commission and Bowlin County EMA for their partnership on this grant. This will allow us to complete our parade route with metal barricades, the interlocking parade barricades. Sherri Schwartz, who is here with me, is, was instrumental also in this grant, but really appreciate Bowlin County EMA, Zach, Jenny, and Danan for allowing us this opportunity. Again, this is a resource that we'll be able to share throughout Bowlin County, so if other municipalities or the county were ever need to borrow those, you know, we'll have that resource available. So thank you again for allowing us the opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. This is another great example of cooperating and working together at all levels. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, the next is BK2, again, a fiscal year 2020 Homeland Security Grant Agreement with Mount New Year Springs Volunteer Fire Department for $49,937 for communications equipment. And this morning with us from Mount New Year Springs Volunteer Fire Department is Chief Kailin Driscoll.
Hey, thank y'all. Just want to say thank you to the County Commission and EMA as well for helping us get this grant. It's going to outfit the rest of our firefighters with the new radios with the 700 system for better communication.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Passing on to you guys and gals. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate you guys, too.
Certainly do.
And Mr. Chairman, the next item is BK3, again, a fiscal year 2020 Homeland Security Grant Agreement with the Spanish Fort Police Department for $49,969 for crowded place protection equipment. And again, this morning, we have the mayor and Chief John Barber of Spanish Fort Police Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing us to participate in this program. I did notice Fairhope got $50,000 and we got shorted $31, so we may come back and ask him for that, but honestly, thank you very much. It'd go a long way. Chief Barber is new with us and he's taken us to new levels and I tell you, his professionalism is going to move Spanish Fort to the top. And I want to thank you, Chief, for everything you do and thank EMA and the County Commission for the awarding of this grant.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, with those being completed, I ask that we, commission approve BK1 to BK3, please, for the grant agreement.
Look at the motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next we have environmental management. We have one item under that, BL1. Staff recommends approval of VL1.
Chairman, make a motion. We approve item number VL1.
And I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second on BL1. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Chairman, next under highway, we have BN1 through BN15 under highway. Staff recommends approval of those items.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve items BN1 through BN15 under highway.
And I'll second that motion.
With a motion and a second for approval. All in favor approving these items signify by saying aye. Aye. Unanimous. What's next?
Mr. Chairman, next is under personnel, we have BQ1 through BQ7. Again, staff recommends approval of these seven items.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the personnel items BQ1 through BQ7.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve BQ1 through BQ7. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. It is unanimous. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, next we have public hearings. We have two public hearings for planning and zoning. The first one is case number Z-20044, Dan and Dan LLC Property Rezoning. We have Ms. Selena Boykin with the Plan Department here to present these cases, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a request to rezone around three acres. The subject property is located in Planning District 22 on the southeast corner of US Highway 98 and County Road 95. The subject property is currently zoned RA, rural agriculture, and the applicant is asking that it be rezoned to B3. The purpose of the B3 request is to allow a convenient storing gas station. The subject property is surrounded by RA zoning and there's also some commercial zoning, B2 and B3 on the corner. Staff has recommended approval and the Planning Commission also recommended approval at their December 3rd meeting.
Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing, so we need to open the public hearing for any comments.
All right. Open the public hearing on case Z-20044, Dan and Dan LLC Property Rezoning. Do we have anyone present that would like to speak with regard to this topic?
Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up to speak either, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Hearing none. Then we have this before us. Do I hear a motion that we approve this?
We close.
Close the public hearing. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve case Z-20044, rezoning from rural agriculture to B3.
And I'll second the motion.
All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. It is unanimous. Next case.
Mr. Chairman, next we have case DR, this is item DR2, case number Z-20045, Parnell Development LLC Property Rezoning. Again, Mrs. Boykin.
All right. This is a request to rezone a little over one acre. The subject property is located on the west side of State Highway 225 in Planning District 4. It is currently zoned RSF1, single family. The applicant is asking that it be rezoned to RR, which is a rural district. The reason for this request is to expand his storage facility for boat and RV storage. If this request is approved, he would also have to receive a special exception from the Board of Adjustments in order to expand the boat and RV storage. The subject property, it is currently zoned RSF1. It is surrounded by some RR and some RSFE. Staff has recommended approval and the Planning Commission also recommended approval at their December 3rd meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Open the public hearing on case Z-20045, Parnell Development LLC Property Rezoning. Do we have anyone signed up to speak, sir?
No, sir, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing or hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I have a question for Selena. It's not part of the public hearing.
All right, Selena, got a question, please.
Although this is not a parameter for making the decision, there's a lot of beautiful oaks on this property. Was there any discussion about that they would try to preserve as much as possible?
I did not have a discussion with the applicant about that. The applicant is here. He might be able to answer that question. He will submit his site plan to the Board of Adjustment.
I understand it's not. I was just wondering if there would have been any discussion about that and hopefully that we try to do as much preservation as possible because when I saw the photo of the property, it's a beautiful piece of property.
I can address that concern with the Board of Adjustment when they approve their site plan.
And Selena, can the Board of Adjustments condition their approval on something like that to just maintain as many oaks as possible or something like that?
Yes, they could.
I'll be glad to address that. Last Parnell, we're the owner. Yeah, this particular site does not have any oak trees on it in the very west part. It's just pines. So there were a couple of oak trees at the front at Highway 225. We tried to save. Aldot required us to put our entrance there, so they had to go.
Oh, okay. Maybe the picture was a little deceiving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Les.
Yeah, I think the property is a little bit irregular shaped. We have an entrance way and then in the back, in the back of the property is the areas being used, I believe. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, I thought it was worth noting.
Very good. All right, we closed the public hearing. We've had some discussion. Entertain a motion regarding case Z-20045.
Chairman, I make a motion. We approve number, case number D, R and case, case number Z-20045, the Parnell Development LLC Property Rezoning.
And I will second that.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next, under committee reports, we have finance administration and the payment of the bills. And I believe Commissioner O'Donnell is going to fill in for this one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pay bills totaling $21,636,4237. With the exception of those vendors commissioners requested to be pulled, which there are none, these are all listed in the Bowlin County Accounts payable payments. Of this amount, $3,870,626.96 is payable to the Bowlin County Board of Education and $241,460.72 is payable to the Gulf Shores Board of Education for their portion of the county sales and use taxes.
Make that in the form of a motion, I guess.
Yes, I said I made a motion at the beginning.
Got a motion, got a motion and a second on the payment of the bills. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, next is EA2, notification of interim payments. Staff recommendation is to approve the notification of interim payments approved by the Clerk Treasurer as allowed under county policy. The staff recommendation is to make the attached interim payments totaling $4,633,4253. And make that part of the record, Mr. Chairman. Then the next down, the last item under the action items are discussion items. The first one is FN1. It's the GOMESA funding for county projects. And this was discussed during the work session as well, Mr. Chairman. And I believe you have a breakdown of that in your agenda item where staff recommends the allocation according to those breakdowns.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve item number FN1, the Gulf of Mexico Securities Act, GOMESA funding for county projects.
And I will second that.
Got a motion and a second on item FN1 dealing with the GOMESA funding for county projects. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. It is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next we have commission requests.
Any requests?
Nope.
None here either?
Mr. Chairman, we have, we have no addendums. The next item is administrative report. I do not have a report since this morning.
All right, we get with our barrister here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, while we did take care of one item, we have two more items for executive session. So once we get to the end, I'll get us back into executive session.
All right. Thank you so much. We have public comment. Do we have anybody from the general public that would like to make a statement on any topics or other topics that might need to come before this body? Seeing no hands raised. Press questions? Wayne, do we have anybody request any? And I see a guy out here.
No, sir. No, sir.
All right. Very good. Commission comment. Skip, let's start with you.
Well, okay, again, I'm going to thank our staff, you know, for all that they've done to get us this agenda out and get it, you know, we had a little bit of a short week, I guess it was yesterday, being a holiday. But I mentioned earlier about what's going on in our nation's capital. You know, I'm kind of disappointed, to say the least, of what's going on there. You know, according to what the news is saying, we've got over 25,000 National Guard people that are guarding our national, our nation's capital, along with 20-something miles of fence that was put up. There's more troops in Washington than there are in Afghanistan and all those countries that we have with other, where we have conflicts. And the worst part about it is our men and women that are serving the cloth are being vetted by our FBI to see what their, I guess it's political outline would be, what they stand for and who they stand for with, which to me is very, very alarming. And as a retired military person, it's a slap in the face to have that presented. I think, you know, that we're going to have to do something, you know, coming up in our in the future. We can't continue to do with what we're doing. It's, it's taking away from what the Constitution of this great nation was created and what it stands for. You know, we've got people that have sworn to take the duties that they're responsible for. They raise the right hand on a Bible, saying that they would uphold the Constitution of the United States to help me, God. And so, with that being said, you know, I hope, I hope that, you know, things turn around and change and we get, we get shredded out a little bit more and just be a little bit better. Thank you.
Thanks. Good job.
I mentioned this in the work session, not thinking that I would have to give two different commissioner comments in the same day, but this is because of the holiday yesterday. We had the work session earlier and now this, this meeting. I just wanted to do a shout out to our staff. Our staff does an excellent job compiling these agendas and also keeping us informed. And I appreciate that with all the distancing that we're having to endure right now, whether it be, you know, physically distant, socially distant, whatever, you guys are great. You're doing a great job. And today's my mom's birthday. She turns 88. She's in a nursing home with dementia, so she probably doesn't really understand that. I know she didn't watch this meeting, but I just want to give a shout out to all those people out there who have family members that are suffering from dementia. And during this time of COVID, this strange time, we have a lot of strange things going on in our, our land and our world. And my siblings and I get to stand outside the nursing home and sing happy birthday to her at 5:00 today. So we are living in strange times. This is the strangest time during my lifetime so far. I know it's not been maybe the most persecution that human beings have suffered since the beginning of humans, but nonetheless, I just want to give a shout out to those out there who, who make this county a great county and I appreciate, I'm honored to be able to serve in this capacity and the great people of Bowlin County.
As chairman, and those of you know that we rotate our responsibilities, I too want to give a shout out to all of our, not just our department heads, but everybody that works in this organization because it is clear that everybody that works here cares. And showing that you care is probably more important now than ever before. Items that Skip touched on bother me as well. I want you to know as a county commission, let me just call out some of the things that we've recently dealt with just this week. State water debris removal, Ono Island Sally impact, Bowlin County Sales Tax Delinquency list, modernization of business license, ITIN Bayway and Eastern Shore Metropolitan Planning Organization, the meeting to deal with DHR and improving communication and effective work for our citizens. Jeb and I met with one of our consultants slash lobbyists to talk about things that need to be pushed forward to get input. This was Martin Christie. We had a very productive meeting. We also have been involved in broadband communication connectivity. I was guilty of thinking that only the rural areas and the outlying areas were the ones that had dead spots. We all know that that's not true and that's something that we have got to get our state and our federal government to deal with. And then, of course, the zoning elections and how you determine districts. And then also, we had our EMA working with the Alabama Department of Public Health, setting up the COVID shots that you got your ticket at 6:30 this morning. The shot started at 9:00. When we had the press conference on Friday, there were over two dozen people that were there to get their shots. I say that because we can hear most anything in the society that we're in now. And I want all of us to take a step back and listen and then based on what you hear, make decisions going forward on any and every topic. It's critical and vital that we communicate. 14 cities and towns, none over 30,000, biggest county in the state geographically. We're going to be the fourth largest county in the state population-wise. We're the best county, in my opinion, and I want every other county to feel like they're the best. But we're not going to stand by and be pushed around by anybody. We need to state our case and move forward. It's interesting, the perception, got a letter from a lady in a subdivision. She's got a concern. She just moved into this area from a county, actually from Sulagaga. And she thought that all probate judges were the chairman of the county commission. So I have a letter addressed to the Honorable Judge Joe Davis III. I am not a judge, but I understand where she was coming from. And she had some concerns about AT&amp;T towers and connectivity. about AT&amp;T towers and connectivity, and also the four-laning of 181. 181 and 31 are two ongoing projects, and there's a neighborhood with 113 homes in it. They only have one way to get onto 181, and currently Aldot is saying they cannot have a left-turn lane going into that neighborhood. School buses go in there, so I'm going to be in touch with Aldot as your chairman to convey this party's concern, but 113 homes that can't make a left turn supposedly means they've got to go up to 104 and 181 and make a U-turn. Now, I don't know about y'all, but U-turns scare the heck out of me, whether I'm doing it or other people are. So those are just examples of the things that we're trying to work on for our citizens. I encourage any and everyone that's watching this, if you have a concern, you contact us, and we don't have answers, but we have people and very competent staff people that will get us details, whether it deals with highways, roads, schools, public safety. By the way, we have 47 buildings that we're responsible for. So when Skip talked about fences and troops and all this stuff, we need to have, I think, maybe revisit our security plan. At least, I'd rather us be better prepared and not have to use it than to have to explain why somebody got hurt or injured or, heaven forbid, killed. So let's all take a step back, let's all express ourselves, but let's also listen. And I'm honored and privileged to be a part of this body, and our job is to make Bowlin County even better as we get bigger. So with that being said...
You want Jeb?
Yes, sir.
What about Jeb? Do you want to see if Jeb can hear us?
Oh, yeah. Jeb, are you on the line?
Yes, sir. I'm still here.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I didn't want to, I didn't want to say too much, but I just, I just wanted to reflect on, especially what Commissioner Gruber touched on, and I think it's a bothersome thing for all of us right now, and as I look at y'all in this meeting, you set under a sign that what promises it to us all. So that is who I trust in to get us through this stuff, and I think that we're, we're all prepared for that, and I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for preparing this agenda and all the work that they do, and for CIS Department for allowing me to be able to do remotely like this. Thank y'all for what you're doing. It's an honor and privilege to continue to work on.
Thank you, Jeb. If there are any other comments, we need to have our attorney, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recommend that a motion be made to adjourn this meeting and to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing with the county attorney pending litigation, litigation that might be pending if the commission takes certain actions or threaten litigation. After the motion and the second, I have to make a comment before y'all vote, and then after the vote, you'll announce that we will not reconvene.
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to go through executive session as stated by our attorney.
And I will second that.
Got a motion and a second.
I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Alabama, and this discussion applies to the exception so stated.
Thank you so much. We will convene in executive session, and then we'll leave the meeting or the meeting will, this part of the meeting is now over and...
Well, we got a vote.
Oh, excuse me.
We got a vote, and then...
You got to vote on it.
Yeah, and then after we vote, then you, all you got to say is we will not reconvene.
All right. Do we have a motion? We do.
Motion and a second.
Motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.